I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council Study Session held on Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, commencing at 7:00 PM. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Fields, Councilmember Nueva Camina, Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Stewart. Council Vice President Forsyth is with us online, and myself, Council President Kritzler. And I will announce Councilmember Salahu Dean when hopefully he joins us. And we have three items on our agenda tonight. The Facilities Condition Assessment/Decarbonization Analysis Overview, a discussion of our Council Retreat Draft Agenda, and Council Talk Time. So the first item on the agenda is the Facilities Condition Assessment/Decarbonization Analysis Overview. I'm really excited for this item. And we have Jenny Liebeck, our Sustainability Program Manager, who will introduce this item. Go ahead, Ms. Liebeck.
Great. Thank you so much for having me this evening. So again, Jenny Liebeck, Sustainability Program Manager with the Executive Department. And with me tonight is Mark Frankel. He is with the energy and policy consulting firm Ecotope. And Mark led the development of the decarbonization analysis, and so he and I are going to be tag teaming the presentation this evening. And then online, we have Parks Director Lorraine Hamilton and Quinn Kuhnhausen, our facilities manager. And so they're just available online to chime in if you all have any questions about our specific facilities or longer-term planning efforts. Oh, thank you. So the focus for our conversation this evening is the decarbonization analysis. And so this was completed last year as a part of our Facilities Condition Assessment. And so the full analysis was included in the meeting materials that we provided today. But what we're going to do tonight is break that document down, touching on some key findings, how we plan to use that analysis, and some important next steps that were identified through this process. But I do just want to level set really quick on a couple pieces. So you may recall that the city allocated one-time dollars in the '23-'24 budget cycle to update the facility condition assessment. So Quinn and his team presented the findings from that assessment in April of last year. But the other component to that work, or to that budget request, was funding to integrate the decarbonization analysis of our facilities. The logic there was, right, if we're identifying maintenance needs within our facilities and we're already looking at that, we also wanted to identify opportunities to advance our sustainability priorities as well. And so again, that's the focus for our conversation tonight. But one other piece just to keep in mind is that the Parks Team is updating the capital facilities plan as well. So that is a priority for the '25-'26 budget cycle. And so the FCA and the decarb findings are being integrated into that planning effort. And you will be hearing more from the Parks Team in the next couple months on that capital facilities planning process. But we will not be touching on that tonight. So let's dive in on the decarbonization work. So some of the goals for this effort, and some of the drivers for the effort, first and foremost, is that we know that Redmond has some really significant climate targets. So through the Climate Emergency Declaration, we know that we're aiming for net-zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2030 for city operations. And we also know that fossil fuels used to heat and cool our buildings make up about 20% of our city operations' greenhouse gas emissions, and that's from our 2022 greenhouse gas inventory. And so we know that those are sources that we need to address if we're going to be hitting our goals. We also have a number of buildings that are required to comply with the state's Clean Buildings Performance Standard. Mark's going to touch on that here in just a little bit. But we did want to make sure that we're positioning the city for success so that we can comply with that state mandate and reduce energy waste within our facilities. And finally, we wanted to make sure that we were strategic and methodical in our future capital requests to ensure that we're providing reliable facilities while also enhancing our energy efficiency and reducing emissions. So through the Facility Condition Assessment, MANG and Ecotope completed energy audits, and they benchmarked the energy use of our buildings. They identified specific equipment that was primed for fuel-switching upgrades, and they also developed tools to help us integrate this information into our day-to-day decision-making as well. So I'm going to hand it over to Mark to walk through the details of that analysis. And take it away, Mark.
Thank you. We wanted to use the opportunity of being in these buildings and looking at them to think about a variety of criteria that are important to the city of Redmond in terms of your environmental goals and cost of operating and maintenance. So there were five basic criteria that we used to evaluate or rank the buildings for decarbonization strategies. The first, as Jenny mentioned, is the Clean Building Performance Standard Compliance Timeline. That is a state mandate that buildings, public buildings, or actually all commercial buildings, have to meet certain energy-use intensity targets. They have to be below a certain threshold, starting in two years, in 2028, the largest buildings, and then moving down into smaller buildings and broader typologies. So in Redmond, there are two buildings that are subject to this compliance within the next two years, which is City Hall, this building, and Public Safety Building. So those are already on the list of needing to comply with Clean Buildings Performance Standard requirements. So we looked at how close they were to compliance as a prioritization strategy. The state has listed energy-use intensity targets for all buildings, and we use those targets as a basis for evaluating Redmond's building stock when we benchmark them. So even though they may not be required by the state to achieve those targets, they still have a set of targets out there that were a reasonable thing to compare the city buildings to. So depending on how much energy use the city buildings had compared to that benchmark, it increased the ranking or priority of dealing with those buildings sooner rather than later. Third criteria was whether natural gas was consumed in the buildings. As you may be aware, the state is requiring all utility providers in the state to achieve net-zero energy, or net-zero carbon energy electricity by 2045 in a staged process. So all electricity providers, including PSE, will be required to increase renewables and offset any sort of carbon impacts of the electricity supply over that timeframe. That is not true, however, for natural gas. It has a carbon impact that just is inherent in the use of natural gas. So even though your electricity is going to get cleaner over time, the gas is not. So gas becomes a priority for decarbonization when we look at gas consumption in buildings. We totaled that up into total annual greenhouse gas emissions. If you're trying to make a difference, you want to target the biggest impacts first. So if it's a large impact on greenhouse gas emissions because of building size or energy efficiency, or all those things combined, it increases its priority. And finally, the age of the equipment in conjunction with the Facility Condition Assessment, when we're looking at all the equipment in these buildings, if it's nearing the end of its life, then it becomes a better target for more immediately addressing the impacts and reducing the carbon associated with it. So when we put these together into a ranking, there's a couple of key findings or observations about the building stock that I would like to go through. So not surprisingly, the carbon impact, the total greenhouse gas emissions, tracks very closely with building size. Not always, but in general, the larger the building, the larger the impact is. And because our electricity source still has carbon impact, even if it's an all-electric building, it still has some impact. But an electric-plus-gas building has a larger impact. So the chart here sort of shows the largest carbon emitters down to the smallest for the top 14 or so buildings. City Hall that we're sitting in has the largest greenhouse gas impact of the city buildings, mostly because of its size. It's also subject to carbon, or Clean Building Performance Compliance. So the city facilities folks will be working to reduce the energy use of this facility to meet the targets, and that will help reduce the overall footprint of this facility. The two largest facilities subject to Clean Building Performance Standard Compliance are City Hall and Public Safety, and those become priorities because you're going to have to get into those by the state mandate. You're going to have to get into those and improve their performance anyway. And so the idea is that there's opportunities to also decarbonize simultaneously, and the decisions you make as you start to deal with those facilities will help reduce your carbon impacts and achieve your goals. Some of the smaller facilities that are in poor condition have elevated carbon and energy impacts because of how they're performing, and that's especially true for the fire stations. Fire stations tend to use a lot of energy for reasons that maybe have to do with design and other things. It's not inherent in the building type. Your neighbor, the city of Issaquah, has a very, very efficient fire station, one of the best in the country. But your other neighbor, Seattle, has lots of very inefficient fire stations as well. So it's not uncommon, but there's a lot of opportunity there. And then, again, as I mentioned, any facility where we went in and saw maintenance needs or equipment near the end of its lifestyle, or all these things together, became the basis of ranking these facilities. So the ranking is a little confusing to look at. Basically, red is larger, higher, or worse, and green is smaller, lower, or better. And so size, they're ranked in the left. These are the top eight buildings, 10 buildings. And they're ranked by size in the left-hand column, City Hall being the largest, Public Safety Building being the second-largest, and so on down the list. And then the second column is the carbon ranking. Again, this is just 1, 2, 3, 4. There might be a lot of difference between 1 and 2, but this is just the ranking. So, you know, Public Safety is second-biggest building, fourth-biggest carbon emitter, second-biggest energy user in terms of efficiency, and its condition is medium. And if you go down the list a little ways, you can see the Senior Center, it's the fourth-largest building, but it has the lowest carbon impact and the lowest energy use, and it's brand-new. So its condition is excellent. So it's got a high number, not a low number for condition. So that's an exemplary building that's achieving all your goals, and it's something we should be emulating. So just looking at the 10 largest facilities, the three largest facilities are also the biggest energy users and the largest emitters. So that's a pretty good linkage with size. Facility condition is not always aligned with carbon and energy impacts. City Hall's pretty new, but it has a very high impact. Senior Center is brand-new and has a very low impact. So you can see that decisions and operating and things like that can make a big difference, not just building size. And I mentioned that the Senior Center is exemplary from an energy and emissions standpoint. So all the information that we gathered from the Facility Condition Assessment and all the decarbonization strategies and all the benchmarking was all put into this dashboard tool that's available to the city for the facilities people, or council, or whoever wants to use it. It's a pretty slick graphic tool that MANG and Analytics put together. I didn't put it together. But this particular page of the dashboard is the carbon and energy page. And on the very left, you can see the dots are graphing facility condition. Left is newer or better, and right, on the bottom axis, is worse. And then vertically is the carbon impact, and the size of the ball is the total greenhouse gas emissions of that building. In the middle, I mentioned that we benchmarked all the facilities compared to the state goals, whether they're subject to enforcement or not. And you can see where the facility is now in terms of energy use and which direction the state goals are. So most of these buildings would need to get a little better to achieve the state goals, although some of them are already below. And then finally, on the right, is total energy use by fuel. Blue is electricity, and orange is gas. You can kind of see which buildings are big energy users and what the fuel mix is.
Great. And so again, this is an internal tool, just again, used to help us operationalize a lot of these findings. So, you know, when Quinn and the facilities team are looking at some maintenance opportunities and things like that, the fields down here, for instance, provide those opportunities. So if equipment fails, they can go in and just have this readily available, again, integrated within their decision-making process. So the analysis highlighted some, you know, I think, really important opportunities for us to be pursuing. So again, a decision-making tool, this will be informing the capital facilities plan, but also looking at some, I think, really strategic and longer-term efforts that we need to be prioritizing. Yeah, I think first and foremost, the need continues for us to prioritize investments in buildings that fall under the state's Clean Buildings Performance Standard. I think we're very, very fortunate that our Parks, Facilities, and Public Works teams had the foresight to request capital funding for this work, you know, years ago. So we're now seeing the fruits of that labor, right, with some of the projects that are underway. And those projects are anticipated to bring us into compliance for those buildings for this first compliance deadline. But we also know that the state's energy-use intensity targets will ratchet down over time. So maintaining that priority for energy efficiency and decarbonization will be an ongoing priority for those buildings. So we'll have in total three buildings, because the Senior and Community Center is also a Tier One building that will need to comply. But I do think it's also best practice, you know, as Mark and Ecotope outlined, for us to be looking holistically at our portfolios, like, that's the standard that we should be working towards, even if we don't have to necessarily, you know, submit compliance documents with the state for some of our smaller facilities. There's also a need for us to formalize this work and adopt an electric-first policy, really to streamline and institutionalize these efforts. Again, we have really phenomenal staff at the city who are already proactively doing this work, but we know staff change, and we just, again, want to make sure that this is baked into how we do business at the city. And then the next recommendation, too, is just that we need to be looking and going deeper with this decarbonization work. So, you know, Councilmember Kritzler, at the PES meeting, you asked, you know, what were some of the surprises that came out of this process? For me, it was really how unique and quirky each building is, and that a lot of this decarbonization work is not as simple as it seems. So, you know, we identified a lot of these opportunities, or, you know, MANG and Ecotope did, but we know that there's just a lot of nuance with this, whether it be, you know, understanding electrical loads or electrical capacity to building, you know, how we adapt existing systems, right? That will all require us to basically do these building-specific decarbonization plans. And so, again, the need for us to really go deeper is going to be a near-term priority for us. And I think, finally, this is not really a big surprise, but the easiest path forward for us is to build highly-efficient buildings from the get-go. Again, Redmond Senior and Community Center being a really great example of that. We don't have to go back and retrofit. When, in four years, when we need to submit our compliance documents for that building, it's going to be streamlined and easy because there was the foresight and leadership from Redmond to build a really efficient and all-electric building. So making sure that we're integrating the lessons learned from this process, but also from our new construction project into future builds is going to be really important to position us for, again, simple compliance with state law and also supporting our climate goals. And I think I'll just close by saying I'm, you know, really excited, too, that through the budgeting process, the council approved a Parks and Sustainability Program Administrator position. So this position will be in Parks, working directly with facilities to implement a lot of these findings. So we're going to have the capacity to bring these pieces to fruition and, again, help us be working towards our goals. So, yeah, so a lot of really fun work ahead. And again, this is the solid foundation we needed to inform our longer-term capital planning work, and, again, continue to go deeper and make sure we're working towards these targets. We can open it up to questions. Those are all the slides we had, and I know this was a high-level overview, but, yeah. Thank you so much. And I forgot to announce at the top, Mayor Bernie is here with us. So Mayor Bernie, yes.
I just wanted to clarify something. We showed the Power BI tool that we use, and that's actually an internal tool that we use. It's not for public consumption, so hopefully the community or the council weren't excited about digging into that. But it's what our staff use to ensure that they are using data to make the decisions that they are in improving our buildings. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Fields?
Did I drift out when you, if you mentioned why the MOC is not on that list?
Yeah, I did not mention why the MOC wasn't on the list. We didn't include it since it will, and Director Hamilton, I don't know if you want to answer that, since I see you came off-screen, since it's, you know, planned for renovation, we didn't want to invest the resources to analyze a facility with the understanding that it would likely be scraped and rebuilt in a few years.
Would it not have been an example of the kinds of things that we could invest in when we do the new building? Could we have learned anything from that, or do we feel like we already know that?
I think we have a really great example with the Redmond Senior and Community Center, and then some of our existing facilities. I think that was, it's such an old facility, it would have been a very intensive process, again, with little output that we would have likely been able to use.
Okay. And then, second question.
And beyond it, oh, sorry, beyond it being an old facility, it's kind of a hodgepodge of facilities. It's multiple facilities built over multiple decades. And so we have learned a lot from it, just trying to keep it operational. And like Jenny said, the Redmond Senior and Community Center will be the best example for us moving forward.
No, and I appreciate that, both of you. I do think that we should include some of those things that we learned about trying to make that building work in this analysis, in some of the work that we're doing. I get it, that it's an old building, it's old technology, but I think it's always important to know current state and future state. So it's just a thought, not... The other question I have is, as you mentioned, this is pretty high-level, and this is, you know, it's kind of like a first-tier... I'm not trying to diminish it, but I could go on Google most of these ideas. But you did mention that there were some difficulties in decarbonization. Can you just give us a few examples that may not be shown here of the kinds of things, the challenges that we face in making these buildings cleaner?
Yeah, and I should note that the Power BI tool that our facilities staff leverages, there are much more detailed, like, notes about the specific pieces of equipment to be replaced and things like that. This analysis is really intended for this kind of room and that kind of thing. So just do know that there is more detail that's informing their work. And your question was around...
With just some sense of what those things might be.
Some of the challenges. Maybe, Mark, you can chime in, too, on this. I'd say one of, like, a great example is our Public Safety Building, where we are effectively maxed out in the electrical capacity there. But as we replace some of the equipment with more efficient equipment, that may mean that that frees up some capacity for us to, you know, do other things that may have greater energy loads. So it's this kind of give-and-take that, again, is going to be very facility-specific. And, yeah, so, I mean, that's one example.
Another is any building that you've put new gas equipment in the last 10 or 15 years in. You don't want to rip it out because it's still working, but it's a big greenhouse impact that you can't get away from. And you've all heard about, you know, the move to heat pumps and electrification. Heat pumps are super-efficient. They get about 3X, 2 to 3X, as much efficiency out of every unit of electricity put in, whereas gas equipment can't quite reach 1, right? It's always, the best is maybe in the 90s percent efficient. So it's not about the fuel itself, it's about the efficiency of fuel utilization that impacts the switch.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. Appreciate the work on this and the opportunity to read the report. Couple of questions. I just want to quickly clarify that the statement was that the current CIP projects, the current portfolio, will bring these two facilities into compliance by June 1st, 2028. So we're good to go on those. Okay, wonderful. And the measure of carbon impact that was analyzed, is it inclusive of the green direct subscription? Because that's fairly new for us.
It is, but, you know, as Mark noted, so the electricity that we purchase is carbon-free, but the natural gas that we consume is not, which is why it's so important for us to switch off from natural gas and move as much of our load to the clean electricity, which will help us get towards our goals.
Wonderful. And that actually brings me to a very specific question, and I believe the council president asked this at committee last week, the need for an electric-first policy. Is that something that you intend to bring to the council for recommendation this year?
Yeah, so that's definitely something that we're targeting for this year, that will, you know, we're currently doing some of that analysis. This will also likely be something that that new position will be carrying. So hopefully, you'll see a new face that's going to usher that one through, and we'll definitely be bringing that to council for input, so.
Okay, wonderful. Just from my perspective, and I think I kind of alluded to this last week when we saw this, I think one of the most important things of this analysis was just the proof of concept and proof of the work. It was worth it on the Senior and Community Center to make the investments that we made, and as we tackle the MOC, or whatever comes next after that, in the longer-term plans, it's worth it to make the investments right the first time. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. Yeah, a really interesting report, and thank you for the presentation. I was noticing that the Marymore Community Center didn't have, we don't have any data on that. And I know we're going to have a conversation about potentially buying out that lease. How does that fit into our plans for making sure that we're reaching these targets? And what tough conversations is council going to have to have when it comes time for that?
That's a great question. Yeah, go for it, Lorraine.
Do you want me to take that one, Jenny? Yeah, so the Redmond Community Center at Marymore Village is currently owned by LeWitt. Our hope and intention in time is to purchase that facility, but at this point, it does not look like that's likely in the next probably four to five years. And so our concern with doing that work now is that by the time we own that facility and are able to make those capital investments, the data will be a bit old and we'll need to redo it. So LeWitt, the Lake Washington Institute of Technology, does the capital work in that facility? We do not. And so at this point, because it's not under our ownership, we didn't bring it into this study. We do acknowledge that when we bring that, hopefully, when we bring that facility into our possession, we will likely need to do a similar study to ensure that we can bring it into compliance. But as we do capital work with the Lake Washington Institute of Technology, for instance, we're looking to upgrade boilers and things like that, they are also looking for the same energy efficiencies that we are in decarbonization, because they have to be held to the same state standards that we do.
That's exactly what I was just going to follow up with. Is there a way that we can see that information before we make a decision on moving forward with that potential buyout of that property down the road?
Yeah. I mean, I think that if and when that moment comes, we'll be able to provide council with all of the information that would be helpful to make that decision about purchasing of that facility, but we don't have it at this point.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yep.
Can I add something? The Clean Building Performance Standard requirements that are coming up for buildings all over the state are going to become part of the diligence review for any real estate purchase in the near term.
Thank you so much. Other questions from the council? Just wait and see, first round, any others? All right, Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. I had one more, actually. I wonder if we could speak, if you could speak a little bit to three things that, in my mind, could inform future decisions and how that might happen. So first is the analysis of the carbon impact of our current facilities. And I wonder about how embodied carbon, it wasn't, I didn't see it referenced in this analysis, but embodied carbon of existing facilities in potential replacement conversations for some of the facilities. Some of the facilities that have the most red in the matrix are some of our most challenging facilities, and we know that. And they have various lifespans, and we'll get into that later when we look at the entire facilities plan. But our embodied carbon measure and how that would relate also to our construction and demolition program. To me, these three things work in some way to inform decisions, but I'm not sure just how. And I wonder if you have any insight on that.
The buildings that you already have, the embodied carbon is already paid for, if you will. So it's inherent in your building. So the only mitigation strategy, then, is in your demolition strategy, and whether you can reuse or manage the carbon that's already existing. So embodied carbon is typically something you can address at construction and specifying new materials and new equipment. In some ways, it, depending, it argues for retaining the good facilities as long as possible, because you don't want to pay the carbon price of the demolition. But in just a few years of poor operation, you expend more carbon on energy than is in the embodied carbon as well. There's sort of a balance, right? Over 40 years, the operational carbon is probably 20 times as big as embodied.
Great. Thank you. That helps me organize my thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask one question, then I'll go to Councilmember Fields. Just curious, we're kind of talking a lot about our top buildings here. Can you share, just for the listening public, the most immediate steps that we're planning to take on City Hall, which shows up as that top priority, just based on both our investments and some of the kind of future pieces that we're looking at?
Yeah, the Public Works and Facilities Teams are leading a project to upgrade the lighting in City Hall, as well as integrate lighting controls to give our folks a little bit more, again, control to reduce, you know, time, so the lights are on when it's not occupied and things like that. So we've actually submitted a grant request from the state through the Clean Buildings Performance Standard Program, hoping to hear back on that soon. But, yeah, so that's, I'd say, that is the largest body of work that we are pursuing to bring down the energy use intensity for this building.
Wonderful. And that's also great for us... Wonderful. And that's also great for us to report back to our constituents that love to ask us when we're going to turn off the lights at City Hall. Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, exactly. Similar question. So whenever any of us buys something new, like we bought a new Volvo electric car not that long ago, almost anything you buy, there is usually operator's manual guidelines that say how to get the best use out of this thing you just bought. And so are we, in this process, going to look at our operations? And you mentioned the lighting, and, but is there any other magical things out there that make us do better as far as energy consumption and, you know, smart technology, or?
I can start, and then, Mark, if you want to chime in too. But at least for the buildings that have to comply with the state's Clean Buildings Performance Standard, we're required to create, like, manuals, maintenance manuals and things like that, and energy reduction plans, to make sure that we're operating our facilities in the most efficient way, and constantly evaluating those. So I think what will be good about this process, too, is that we're developing these for our largest facilities, but it'll be an opportunity for us to scale that to some of our smaller facilities as well. So again, we'll have some really good lessons learned here that we can apply. We will have the capacity with the new staff to be able to do that. So that's one piece. Are there any other pieces?
In the building sector, over time, you can imagine that, you know, the manuals get lost, or pages of the manual get lost, or the controls get overwritten, or things get fixed and not accounted for. And so the process in relatively recent, but not new buildings, is commissioning the building again. And that sets up, you know, sort of resets the controls back to factory settings and idealizes them, and engages the operator who probably wasn't there when the building was first delivered, more in the process. So there's a lot of ways to improve existing building performance. This building, as I understand, you just changed providers recently for the building operation. And I think there's a, just looking at, you know, just my light touch on this building, and there's a lot of operation improvement opportunities here that'll bring this building into compliance without a lot of investment. Public safety, there's going to be more investment, probably, because it's got a lot of old systems that, it's not about the operation, I mean, that's part of it, but there's a lot of old systems, underinsulated or whatever, that have to be fixed as well. Whereas this building, it's really just a tune-up problem, so.
And I will note that Councilmember Salah Houdin has joined us as well, online. Other questions from the council on this? All right, well, seeing none, can you share with us any next steps when we will next hear about this?
For, I would say, the next steps would likely be with the capital facilities planning work, which is being led by our Parks Department, and they'll be coming to you in the next couple of months. Because again, all of this work that we've talked about, both the decarbonization analysis, as well as the facilities condition assessment, is directly informing the development of that plan, right? So that's where a lot of this work is going to be operationalized and prioritized, and, you know, again, put into our planning work. So I'd say that is the first, like, most near-term piece. And then hopefully, I don't want to give a timeline, but sometime later this year, and again, once we have that capacity onboard, too, is when we'll really dive in on the policy development piece as well.
Great. Well, I will look forward to the electric-first policy coming to us as soon as you are able to work on it. And thank you so much for the work on this. This is very exciting, and look forward to making our city cleaner and greener. So with that, I think we'll close out this agenda item and move on to the next item on our agenda. Thank you so much. So the next item on our agenda is a council retreat draft agenda. I actually, originally, I will transparently say, I originally just planned to have this under council talk time, so it's not going to be a super-deep agenda item, but since we already had a discussion about this, but I will be presenting this along with Council Vice President Forsyth. We had the opportunity to meet with our retreat facilitator and do some planning based on the feedback the council gave us at the previous study session, and thinking about how we could use the best, use our time best during the retreat to cover the many different issues that have been coming up. So I think, actually, what might be best is I can screen share here, so that way you all can see this, and then I will send this out afterwards. We just have been working on updating this this week, so, but I will send it out and, after this meeting. Hopefully, let's see if I do it right. Here we go. So I'll just go over what we have currently for the retreat agenda, and if folks want to give your, any feedback now, or you can just send us any other thoughts, or reach out to us before the retreat. More just wanted to make sure, are we generally flying at about the right level here? I'll see if I can zoom in a bit. There we go. I think that might be better. Okay, so essentially, we're going to start with welcome introductions and icebreaker that should be fun, per the request everyone had, and we have, we're going to find some ways to respond to the requests on fun, but also be able to make the most of our time. So we'll start, then jump in. And really, I'll just say, high level, the morning is going to be a lot of our different internal processes, and revisiting some of the processes we've been setting up, and making sure that we have clarity with ourselves on some of these. So the first is spending the first chunk of time on the hopper slash policy proposal form, as we've renamed it, and the process for reviewing those submissions. So we're going to kind of be able to have council members answer the questions together on what's been working well, how it can be improved, be able to review some proposed form updates that we've been looking at, to be able to add some additional clarity. And then also, I'll just say for council members, as you're preparing for this section, is to think about, you know, what kinds of things have gone through the hopper that have worked well, what kinds of practices have made it be a little bit more streamlined on proposals that have been more successful, which ones, you know, haven't, and what have we kind of learned through using this process? And then I think one of the big questions that we hope to answer within this section is, you know, we have the policy list we generate at the retreat, we have things that come through the hopper, we have other parking lot items, and how do we kind of bring those together and prioritize them throughout the course of the year? So we'll be discussing that. The second, we'll be talking about our subcommittees last, this last year, this was the first time that we decided to form these, so it's really an opportunity for us to check in on how they're working, what have we learned, what are our next steps on these, and what kind of clarity do we need on them. Then we'll talk about our legislative coordinator and the role of the ombuds person, be able to, since now we have a legislative coordinator who's available for a full-time role, to be able to support us, really discussing, you know, how, what we might envision for the support. All we'll be bringing in advance, we'll send out, what's the current kind of job description on that, but I think the council can certainly shape some of how we engage on that, and the ways that we can get more assistance there. And I think linked to that is this conversation we've been ongoing having around the ombuds person, so it'll just give us some more time to talk about that. And then we also had raised in a past hopper item, wanting to see at the retreat a discussion around leadership roles for council members, and addressing potentially the issue that one council member doesn't chair a committee or have a council leadership role. So put that for some time. We'll have a little time for lunch. And then the last, in terms of kind of council processes, there were a lot of these items, so our retreat facilitator is going to be really focused on, you know, what are the, really keeping us on track to have conversations and try to get to some good outcomes. The last is to have, just, this, this one will be a little more of a brainstorm. There's been a lot of topics raised around how do we communicate and connect to our community as a council, also recognizing, we also, in the budget process, did invest in more communications resources. So being able to, I think this one's really for council leadership to hear from the council on some of the goals and interests, so that we can work with the administration to make sure that we can get the support that we need for that work. I will note that today, Council Vice President Forsyth and I met with some of the emergency management staff to be able to get, whoops, to be able to get some of their feedback, or be able to talk about the process specifically on preparation for emergencies. And we did agree between us that they are going to be coming to us with a draft of kind of handbook for council members on things, on kind of protocols for emergencies, as well as communications protocols. So that's some exciting work that's to come, but I think we can talk about that also at this retreat. And then, really, from 1:30 to 4, we're going to be spending time, then shifting from kind of our, how we work and working out those issues, to talking about policy and process. We're going to start with, per the request from some council members, reviewing what's on our current list, what are we working on, what did we task ourselves with, what came up during our budget process, so we can kind of think about what we have going on. And then we also wanted to make some time, before we even start putting things up there, to just have a discussion, per council request, about, you know, how are we governing in this current moment that's going on in our country? What kinds of things do we want to do as we show up for our community? Since we get a lot of, we've been getting a lot of messages of community concern, and so kind of thinking collectively and taking that time in a retreat setting to be able to talk about that, and some ideas, if there are any collective policy goals that we have in the time ahead on that. And then also to be able to bring up some of the different policy ideas. I know, for example, Councilmember Salah Houdin had raised the youth council idea, and a couple others had raised some other ones, and I think in this one, we'll be able to take our existing policy parking lot and add some things to it, and then we'll do the prioritization exercise. Our facilitator has some ideas on how to improve that prioritization exercise. And so I think it will get us to a really good set of things, and a really good set of outcomes. And hopefully, by the end, we can prioritize what are our very top things, and then also have a good list to work on throughout the rest of the year. So that's what we're hoping to be able to accomplish from 9 to 4 on a very jam-packed Saturday, and looking forward to it. I will now stop sharing, and I will send this out, so not expecting everyone to just take it all in and have comments immediately on all the details, but did want to kind of walk you through our thinking. Council Vice President Forsyth, do you have anything to add before we go to questions and comments from the council?
I think you covered it well.
Thank you so much. So are there comments, thoughts from the council, anything that's glaringly missing, or that you would want us to kind of prep the retreat facilitator with, so that we can have a successful day? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. Lots of work has clearly gone into this, and it's a very comprehensive list, because we had a very comprehensive list, so thank you so much for working on it. One of the things that just comes to my mind in seeing it here is how helpful it would be to have maybe a folder set up on our SharePoint site that has the latest documents related to all of these discussion items, so that I essentially see, basically, a bit of preparation work I know I myself need to do in order to come to these conversations with enough perspective and ideas to move along in the timeline that we need to. So having all of those preparation materials in one place would be really helpful. And in particular, I have been actually looking around and could not identify, and if it's just on me and I missed it, that's completely understandable, but I have been looking around for the latest version of that policy priority list, and I could not locate the most current one. So that one, I would also love to have saved in a place that where we could all prepare for the retreat. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will note on that policy priority list that I think, to be honest, there isn't one central version, because you have things that came through the hopper, you have our list from the last year, you have, you know, things that came up during budget, and so we kind of need to compile it into a new list. So my hope is that we can do some of that in advance of this retreat, so we can see it all in one place. And I actually started doing that for our facilitator, just because she also was asking, so where is this list that exists? And so was kind of pulling that all together. And then I think we'll probably come out with a refined list out of the retreat that will be re-prioritized, would be my hope. On documents, definitely can do that, and I want to commit to the council that I will strive to get that out this week, so that way you have enough time to review in advance of the retreat. Councilmember Anderson?
Perhaps I missed it, but because we don't have this in front of us, I was curious about the subcommittees. We will be spending some time on reviewing subcommittees, is that correct? I just didn't see it at the end of the...
Yeah, the subcommittees are, will be the second item that we'll talk about.
Okay, I missed that part. Thank you.
Yeah, and we'll be, on that one, kind of questions that I have are, how have they been working? What have we learned? What clarity is needed on how they function and how new ones get established? And then also, what's the next step for existing subcommittees? So some of these early ones, I think we're really, like, have questions that we need to answer, and we all need to decide together, what is the answer? Other questions, comments on this? Okay, seeing none. I will just note that if you haven't sent your order for food to Deidra, please respond to her, so we can get you lunch ordered. We're also going to get snacks, and we'll try to, throughout the day, and we'll have, we're going to try to get some good coffee for us, so. Many council members have passionate feelings about coffee, and some breakfast treats. And if there's any new food restrictions or other needs that you have, please let us know, so that we can get the appropriate snacks to make sure that everyone can be well-fed and hydrated throughout the day. So we'll look forward to this retreat, and I'll just ask, I will send out all this information. If council members can read through this, look at the questions, and kind of think through what your answers are, it'll help us to be able to cover a lot of ground, as you can tell, of what we want to cover during this retreat. If some conversations go longer, that's where we'll be at, but we have asked our facilitator to kind of herd us, so that way we can really kind of cover on things, come up with some resolutions, and move on to the next item, so that way we kind of take a lot of, a lot of these things are things that we keep coming up throughout the year, as saying, we need to have a longer conversation on this, and now we're going to take that time to do it, so. And of course, we'll have the opportunity with next steps to be able to identify if there's any more conversation that is needed. All right, so if there's nothing else, then we'll move on to the last item on our agenda, which is council talk time. The only thing that I will note for council talk time is that, for the listening public, we do not have a meeting next week. Our next business meeting will be on March 4, because we usually have two business meetings a month, and that would be the business meeting, but we're canceling it, because our council will be going to Olympia to be able to meet with our legislators and to advocate on behalf of our city for our city's priorities. And then we'll be back for a study session in the following week. And council members, I will say, if anyone wants to coordinate on carpooling, email Deidra, and she can hopefully connect any council members that want to coordinate on carpooling. So, and looking forward to the AWC conference. So, and meeting with our legislators. Are there any other items for council talk time? All right, well, seeing none. That brings us to the end of our agenda. This meeting is adjourned?